Language and it was now incorrect after we adopted it, we'll have to go and amend that policy to to match the law.
So what we're trying to figure out is if we pass the policy, if that's enough, or if we have to go through and say, okay, we have to amend O P C's contract, we have to, because it'll affect the O P C employees that work in June and July.
Yes, and if 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 we are interpreting the law correctly at this point, this affects about forty employees, is that accurate?
Here's a list of employees.
I'm not gonna count on my memory.
Well, no, I'm gonna pass it around.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't, you've seen that list, so.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So we're adding Juneteenth, which holiday would you rather work, Christmas, Memorial Day?
Yeah.
Thanksgiving, Christmas.
Well, and and that's a discussion, because when I was on my annual conference, that was discussed. Some people had already taken the initiative to negotiate with their unions on President's Day instead of Juneteenth.
Yeah.
Um.
So they're not, they're not padding it?
There's some controversy of whether or not that's legal.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
At the advice of our counsel at a at a legal update, he said, make sure your policy's accurate, uh, find out which employees it impacts and put it on their calendar. That was, that was their advice. You have, for example, Mrs. Held, Mrs. Pfeiffer, Mr. Carr, Mrs. Steyer. It's going to extend their work calendar one additional day and likely have to have them come back a one Monday or a Monday and a Tuesday. Um, and, you know, people like an administrator, if they say, hey, I'd like to work this day instead of this day, we adjust that in their work calendar. Um, the twelve-month employees that are, um, are maintenance, custodial, uh, myself, Jerger, Swisher, those are the ones where we have to sit down and 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 figure out how we.
So.
We're gonna speak to the administrators about the next administrative council.
That's it, on administrative council.
Well, I I guess if it were any other national holiday that was declared, would we be going through the same process?
If it wasn't.
To me, to me.
It's a totally recognized holiday.
To me, don't take away one to give them one, they, I mean, the government's giving them an additional day.
That's kind of what the way the attorney interprets it as well.
Okay.
Um, and then, is there no more questions on that?
Thanksgiving, thanks.
You guys don't get holidays, it won't matter if you're working.
Play with this game, it is not a holiday. Excellent. T V, yeah.
So, Juneteenth, um, any other questions regarding that? The next thing is a resolution declaring the intent to proceed with the election of a questionable renewal of an emergency tax levy. Um, as you can see in the attachments, um, the auditor has certified the amount and the rates. Um, as all of you are familiar, an emergency levy collects a fixed sum of money, not a fixed rate of money, which is why the millage changes every year. Um, and currently, when she certified it, she certified it, um, five point four one mils for each dollar valuation for twenty twenty-three, which will be twenty twenty-two tax year. Um, it's fifty-four cents for each additional hundred, one hundred dollars of valuation. Is there any questions on what was certified and the language that is presented that I will be presenting to the board of elections to be put on the ballot for the November election?
What is that specific amount again?
Um, it is.
One point five.
Point five.
Five point four one mils, fifty-four cents per one hundred dollars of valuation.
Okay.
And the total amount is one point five eight million per year for a period of five years.
There's no change to this levy, it's not increased to what they're paying now. Um, because it's a fixed sum levy, the millage is adjusted to only collect that amount of money. So if valuations go up, that one point five stays the same, so the collection millage on that could lessen.
And this was originally passed in nineteen ninety-six, if I'm not mistaken. I think that's correct.
Yeah, I think that's right. So I can time through.
Yeah.
For that, I believe you don't have any additional questions on that, that's the last of my discussions.
Thank you, Mrs. Swisher. Any further discussion? If not, we'll move to the treasures report action items. First is twelve point one, March financials.
I'll make.
Four point one. Thank you, Gary, and second from Chris. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mrs. Overland?
Yes.
Mr. Rodenberger?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Next is four point two, amended appropriation and estimated resources.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Les.
I'll second.
Gary, any further discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Overland?
Yes.
Mr. Rodenberger?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Next is four point three, electric powered project agreements.
I'll make the motion on four point three.
Thank you, Chris.
I have a second.
Thank you, Kathy. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rodenberger?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mrs. Overland?
Yes.
Four point four, create fund, uh, during art S R for twenty twenty-three.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Les.
I'll second.
Thank you, Gary. Any further discussion? Uh, roll call.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mrs. Overland?
Yes.
Mr. Rodenberger?
Yes.
And final action item in the treasures report, four point five, the resolution declaring the intent to proceed with the emergency tax levy.
I'll move on to four or five.
I'll second.
Thank you, Gary, Les. Any further discussion? Not roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mrs. Overland?
Yes.
Mr. Rodenberger?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Thank you.
And you. And next we have Mr. Morton, our superintendent's report.
Fantastic, big weekend coming up for the Defiance High School junior senior prom is, uh, this Saturday, the dance is held at the Eagles and the after prom or post prom is held here at Defiance High School and is run by junior parents. Um, I thought maybe as superintendent, my prom days were over, but since I've been junior in high school, I will be spending the entire evening at the after prom, uh, supporting the student staff appreciation is right around the corner. We have, uh, communicated with the buildings on, uh, they'll be providing them a lunch, uh, this year, and that will be, uh, the week of May two through six. Of course, the election's coming. Uh, if you're able to get to the community auditorium on May eighth, our annual Sousa concert is, uh, uh, there at two P M. That is, uh, one of the best shows you could see if you get an opportunity to see that, they do an outstanding job of honoring our military and John Philip Sousa. Um, May eleventh through our, uh, communications strategic plan, Sherry will expand on it, our senior citizen breakfast, another board meeting here, the only board meeting in May, Mrs. Swisher will be presenting her five-year forecast that evening. Then, uh, the high school choir concert, uh, is at the auditorium at three P M. on May fifteenth. Uh, last day for students and they will be getting out of school early that day, uh, May twenty-five. Uh, teacher recognition and breakfast, uh, that day on May twenty-sixth, and my computer just went blank literally as in the middle of this. And so, well, give me. And then we have graduation, so you guys have a couple of them bear with me, and I'll know when it's back. That's it, better for that. Okay? Thanks. Any questions on the upcoming dates? Administrative reports, Mr. Wall, you and, uh, Brown Robin, if you'd like.
Thank you. Uh, we'll start with, uh, Sherry Steyer, have those.
Make a short and sweet for you guys. Um, we are working through, uh, the dyslexia program to continue, um, looking at our phonics adoption, so working with the K three buildings, um, doing the T V team, uh, meetings with them and then getting the representatives to be able to talk to our top phonics representatives and have any questions with that. Um, our goal is to have materials ordered or the professional development landed and in place before the end of the school year. And then with our preschool enrollment, um, the community screenings are completed. We had fifty-six Defiance City School students attend. Currently, we have a hundred fifty-one preschoolers with a hundred thirty-nine of them, um, attending our facilities and twelve students attended. So to expand upon the senior citizen breakfast, I'm gonna be the cheerleader here, trying to recruit people in the public to come and join us on May eleventh, eight-thirty is when we start, doors open probably about, oh, between eight, May fifteen. Um, parking in the front, it'll be completely clear, so anybody that wants to come, that's where they get to park. Come in, we will serve them breakfast. Actually, we have National Honor Society, Student Council from middle school and high school, those students will help serve. Um, then we start our program, Mr. Morton will kick it off at eight forty-five. Then we go from there to students presenting, um, things from all of the buildings, STEM program, we have robotics, we have D N N, and we have CAD. So some things that we just want to highlight for the public. Um, then we, there's an opportunity to tour the building, and students will lead the tour around the middle school and high school, so please join us. The next one is we are required by federal regulations to have public input for our, um, I D E A D, which is the special education funding, funding that we have. Um, Mr. Mrs. Swisher and I will be on May twenty-fifth at two o'clock, we will have a Google meet, uh, the Google link is on our website. So we hope that public will give us some input on what we do with the federal money for I D E A, which is, once again, um, special education, and that also is the ARPS I D E A money that we'll be asking them for input. That's it.
Is there an age requirement on the senior breakfast? I know most of these. Well, everybody but, uh, you know, Mr. Wall and myself probably wall ten, but, you know, I didn't know if I'd reached that level of.
What we said as a committee, well, what we said as a committee is we will not judge, is so if somebody considers them felt a senior citizen, then they are more than welcome to help. We will not judge that.
So tell all your friends, Gary. Bring them home, Gary.
I'll be there.
There we go.
Thank you, ladies. Uh, next we'll have Mr. Moats, Director of Altitude Education.
Mr. Moats will be there too.
What's that?
Bring your kids.
He does have.
Um, and the first page of this, uh, report is data from the last thirty-seven school days, but I really wanted to touch on the back of it. Um, the start of the D A L C, Defiance Alternative Learning Center, uh, we have two goals, and that's to, um, have a good credit recovery program and have a good in-school suspension, um, and behavioral intervention program, so, uh, this is for the first hundred fifty days. Um, we have, right now, we have seven kids on site, we have two kids doing hybrid at school and online and at home online, six, and our two seniors, they completed credits to graduate, um, which we are, um, excited about that. Um, and the, uh, D A L C referrals, uh, we had a total of two hundred nineteen. Um, that would be a hundred twenty-nine, uh, D C S students. Um, and what I was impressed with, uh, the kids that came to us, over fifty percent only came, uh, one time. So that shows that what we're doing down there, uh, is, is, I believe is working, and I'm excited to compare that till next year and the years after that, so. And as you go down, you start, uh, seeing the, uh, percentages go down, um, after two referrals, three referrals, so I'm excited, uh, that it's working and, um, I hope, hopefully, it, uh, you should see academic results go up from that.
So the referrals?
Mm-hmm.
Are these otherwise out-of-school suspensions?
They, yeah, they, they are, they could be, um, and instead of out-of-school suspension, they serve them in school. Uh, we're in constant contact with teachers, gathering assignments.
Oh, I understand that. I'm, I'm talking to the public, so to speak, so they understand.
Yeah.
That what you've served here, these, these students would have lost.
Yeah.
Out on.
Right, they would.
Education, if we had been old business.
Yeah, if you, uh, they would maybe get, get their work and then go home, maybe not do it, I mean, uh, but when they're in D A L C, they get it done and they got, they had.
Or an extended learning experience, so.
And they, they get help from me and Mr. Don Buck, who's been awesome, um, right guy for the job, um, yeah.
I think one of the, the data points that we can bring you is previous years' out-of-school suspension as compared to this year and future years, and where that uh, is, and I think that would also kind of, uh, echo the point Jacob's saying in that, one, we're keeping kids in school and making sure their, their work is being done.
Yeah, I just want to reinforce that for the public that, uh, the program has many benefits and it's proven successful because we're reaching the kids and that's our job, so.
Yeah, Jacob and and Chad do an excellent job, they really do.
Yeah.
I, I get to see it firsthand almost every day.
That's.
Any other questions, Chris?
You all are doing excellent. Each and every one does an excellent job.
Next, Mrs. Held, K two, I'll win.
I just want to highlight a few things for the month. It looks like we do a lot of partying, I know, at the elementary, but I promise there's curriculum being delivered also.
Can you, can you, hold on, it takes a while for yours to load because of all the.
I know, I want to see the kids and their smiling faces, and you know, and you know what's happening.
I'm ready now.
All right, so if you're ready, um, I just posted the pictures for you to see who were tail wagging award winners, um, and our P B I S winners and the field trips and things that we did. And I told you a few months back that we try and, some of the reward parties are the children giving back, and then others are them actually getting, um, a different type of reward, so the one that they did this past, um, time, they wrote thank you notes to our custodians, and then if you can see the sign in the fence there, it does say that we heart our custodians, so they did appreciate that. And the other thing that I wanted to highlight is we did just have kindergarten screening. Um, we had about a hundred and thirty students in and got them screened in about three days. We have two makeup days, May sixteenth and seventeenth, so if there are any parents out there that have uh, missed that original screening date, they can call the school and we can get their student in still. Uh, we have about thirty already scheduled for those two days, so it is a busy time. And other than that, um, I also want to highlight Charlotte Wendell and Naomi Cost won the writing contest um, at the library as a first grader and a second grader, and that was in competition for anybody in the county that competed, so I was really proud of both of those girls.
That was at the Defiance County Public Library, correct?
Yes, yes, their, um, awards program was the same night as, um, our strategic planning and the foundation meeting, so shout out to Julie Mast, our first grade teacher that went and took pictures for me, so that you could see that the girls were awarded with that. Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Held. Next, Mrs. Pfeiffer, free goodbye, I'll win.
Okay, I want to talk about our P B I S and a little bit of our choirs and about Ohio State testing. Um, so our P B I S reward parties, we wanted it to start being more experience-related and trying to build some relationships with the people that, um, they might need to talk to. So one of them was with Mr. Beck, they did basketball with Beck, and then in March, we did a special lunch, which was pizza and cookies and chips with, um, Officer J. And they seemed to have fun with that, and they asked them all kinds of questions about being a cop and what's it like being a cop in a school versus other places and, um, fifth graders were kind of slow to open up, um, third and fourth, they were just having a ball, they were laughing, it was really good. Um, so to piggyback on that, um, our next party is munchies with mojo. And I had to ask Officer Herbert if her schedule was open, it was, you know, he wants to come along, that's fine, but they were like, mojo! So that should be interesting, so they're gonna have, um, snacks and ask questions again, you know, how's it like being a, a dog officer is what they call them, and there might be some time to go outside too, it just depends on the weather. Um, with our bark days, we had to switch, um, we did B A R K, and our K for kindness is supposed to be at the end of the year, but because of the weather and what they want to do with the um, R for respectful, we had to switch it, so, um, we had some kids made cards for nursing home people, some people made, um, placemats, they made posters, um, we wrote, since it was before testing, we wrote some encouraging letters to a sister school, Brian, and the third graders wrote it to the third graders, and then, um, Brian's city school also, and for, same thing for fourth and fifth. And then they sent letters back saying, you can do it too, and because everybody's nervous about state testing. Um, speaking of state testing, I'll just jump to that, um, before the choirs and I'll talk about the choirs. So we are done, hallelujah, all done with state testing, all the makeups and everything, it was really nice. And I do think we're gonna get the state testing scores back sometime in June, maybe around June fifteenth, not sure. But I did want to say a huge thank you to Mr. Bill Graham, um, and the Defiance Walmart for generously donating almost six thousand mints to all of our third, fourth, and fifth graders who took tests, so that was awesome. Um, for our performances, the fourth grade sign choir and the fifth grade choir had their performances in March. And it was really interesting watching the fourth grade, um, sign choir, especially because they had the song Surface or Surface Pressure from Encanto, and everybody knows Encanto, and they really got into it, like their expressions were really fun, and I, my pictures don't do it justice, but they did an awesome job, and the fifth grade choir, there's not very many of them, but they, they were great. So I wanted to give a shout out to them. Sorry, I went a little fast, but you have any questions?
Fight fight.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Pfeiffer. Uh, next, Mr. Carr, middle school.
Uh, highlight a few things here. Uh, May is a busy time for us, I threw in our band and choir concerts, uh, end of the year. Uh, band concert for the middle schools Tuesday, May tenth, and choir concerts then the week after on May seventeenth. Um, state testing, uh, wrapped up our science test yesterday, we just have a handful of makeups, uh, within the next couple of days to get those, get those hammered out. Uh, tomorrow, though, we do have an incentive for our, our students that were tardier in testing. I would say probably about ninety-five percent of our students did what we asked them to do, um, with help from beyond the bell money, um, it actually goes with their last night, they wrap up the season tomorrow before they come back, um, for summer, summer camp, uh, we're gonna have inflatables, video game truck, um, outside for, for the kids who enjoy tomorrow for about an hour and a half for each grade level, um, and then doing some activities out on the baseball and softball field too, so, uh, be a good day for students, a little chilly, so we told them to dress more, but.
Wear your coat.
Wear your coat out there, so got that message out, out to them this morning.
Those good kids are wearing coats.
Uh, they'll, they'll show up in t-shirts and shorts tomorrow, so that's fine. Um, last thing I want to point out is Mr. Strang, some of his career connections classes have been doing some, um, getting some firsthand experiences this past month, uh, they've taken trips to, um, Defiance City Police Department, Fire Department, um, the State Bank, Sheriff's Office, so kind of neat to see those kids out and about in the community and just thank our community partners for allowing them to come in and and talk about their, their careers or their jobs and, um, seeing that firsthand.
Any questions for Mr. Carr? Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Jerger is away at a baseball game tonight, so in his place, we have Mr. Fisher, the assistant principal from the high school. No pressure, no pressure.
Uh, first of all, uh, we do, uh, we just wrapped up our state testing today, the regularly scheduled state testing we had, we have some makeups to do. Other than that, went as smoothly as we can possibly hope for. A P testing is coming up as well, May second through May twelfth for the A P kids. Senior exams are gonna be here before you know it, Monday, May sixteenth, and Tuesday, May seventeenth. We'll already have our seniors taking their final exams for the semester. Uh, big one, academic awards ceremony for the class of twenty twenty-two is Wednesday, May eighteenth. Everyone will be invited here, get, you'll be getting info from Mr. Jerger soon on that, as it is a big ceremony for everybody. We'll have indoor graduation practice that day at seven forty-five. Eight thirty A M. Award ceremony will be going on with the cap and gown to be worn by all the seniors, parents and immediate family will all be welcome to attend. Anybody in the class of twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five will also be welcome to attend and watch that and celebrate our seniors. They'll be taking pictures, Jerry Ladd will be doing that for us. We're gonna start a new tradition this year that Mr. Jerger came up with and and some others that we think's really cool, at ten o'clock, the seniors are gonna walk through the high school and the middle school with all the students out in the hallway, so they can celebrate them and, and kind of give them, you know, a little bit of a pep talk on the way by, hopefully. And all the other kids can see how that looks and, and the success stories of our seniors. They'll also go through at ten thirty A M., they're gonna go through the elementary as well, so the younger kids can see them. And they'll be leaving Monday, or, uh, Wednesday, May eighteenth, they'll be leaving at eleven, and that'll be their last day. We also have academic boosters club ceremony on Thursday, the nineteenth. It'll be in the community auditorium at the Old Defiance Junior High at six thirty P M. We'll be giving awards to honor roll students, straight A students, be some prizes for the attendees as well. And we have graduation practice for the seniors coming up on May twenty-sixth, it's a Friday. It'll be at ten A M., it'll be at the high school football field out here on the high school campus. And finally, graduation for our hundred and seventy-five seniors will be Sunday, May twenty-ninth at two P M., we'll be having that at the high school field. Unless it's bad weather, then we are prepared to have that in the gym inside as well. Other than that, that's all we have coming up in May for the high school.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
We'll see in the, uh, consent agenda, you're actually approving one seventy-nine, and, uh, right, Mr. Fisher just told you one seventy-five. There's one that is, Mr. Jerger actually told me today, that's close, it could be potentially one seventy-six. But I was out today to close the business, um, that cohort started with one hundred and eighty-one students uh, in that, so, uh, those are, uh, good numbers and, and, uh, we're aware of one of the one eighty-one that has moved away and we're unable to track down, but it stays with our schools and our cohort, so.
Uh, final report is technology report, Mr. Record.
Good evening, everyone. Um, last time we were here, I talked about, uh, we're starting our summer P B program again after taking a break because of COVID, et cetera. So surveying the staff, uh, I found out what they're interested in, and we've come down, we've come up with four different, more or less sets, sets for them to choose from. One, we're running our Google Academy again, which we've done several years in the past, and that focuses on the primary tools in the Google suite, Drive, Docs, Sheets, Slides, Forms, Google Classroom. Um, staff that sign up for that are typically people that are new to the district and never used it before, never had any formal training, that's typically who has signed up for the Google Academy because most of our staff that's been here for a while, that they've already gone through it, they're comfortable, so they typically don't sign up for that one. We also have a very popular session, uh, covering Smart Notebook and the Smart Boards. Every year, Smart has new software features that come out, so we want to highlight some of those the staff might not know about. In addition, the Smart Boards themselves have different features built in, there's apps that can be downloaded for it, a lot of staff might not even know about that. So Bryn Lane is gonna teach that course, uh, because he uses Smart Boards every day in class, so he keeps pretty familiar with them. Um, in that course also, we're gonna cover a little bit on what's called Google Jam Board, and that's essentially Google's version of an interactive digital-only whiteboard that can be collaborative with all of your students. Teachers can create a jam board, they can share it with their class, with individual students, and students can collaborate on it in real time, and everyone involved can see the edits, see the changes as it happens, uh, real time. So even if you have a student that's off-site, they could participate in that as well, if the teacher had a lesson structured that way. And the last one, um, we're gonna have a session that, uh, we're calling Google Projects. And there's a lot of these Google tools that maybe weren't necessarily designed for education, but people have found ways to use them. Um, both Google Maps and Google Earth, Earth have ways for users to generate their own custom maps and their own custom journeys using Google Earth, using the images, uh, that's Google's, has provided for you. Uh, we're gonna cover that one, and also, uh, Google Arts and Culture. They have curated literally millions of photos and information from different museums across the world about artifacts and paintings and sculptures and everything you could possibly could think of. And there's lots of different ways which those can be incorporated in the classroom, so we're gonna focus on that and come up with some ways for teachers to to use these resources that most people don't even really know about, but if you just to have some fun, Google search Google Arts and Culture and take a look at all the different, um, collections that they've gathered and the information they have about it, it's really quite fascinating that the, the lines have gone together, all this information up. So we're expecting a decent turnout right now, we have over twenty staff members that have signed up. Um, at least one custodian member has signed up already for the Google Academy class, which I thought was interesting. Um, we've got counselors that have signed up and then teachers. It is open to all Defiance, uh, city school staff members, including board members, if you want a tutorial on any of this stuff, let me know, I'll send you to the signup form, but you're all welcome to attend. So hopefully we'll get a few more teachers to sign up and we'll have a good turnout this year. Any questions?
That concludes the administrative reports, and also the discussion items for superintendent's, superintendent's report, if there is one action item, Mr. Morton, you want to.
Yeah, I would, uh, uh, recommend that you award a high school diploma to Joseph E. Kolb. Uh, Mr. Kolb served in, in the United States Army, he was a specialist fourth, fourth class, uh, during the Vietnam era from July. From July twenty-one nineteen sixty-seven to July twenty nineteen seventy.
I'll move on then.
I'll second. Mister Moes.
Yes.
Mrs. Irwin.
Yes.
Mister Rodenberger.
Yes.
Mister Wall.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
My goodness, well, we excuse the administrators, do we need to put them there?
Yeah, that's a good point, Gary. If any administrators would like to leave, we just have a consent agenda after this, but uh we don't expect you to stick around, so.
You want to stay?
Somebody's gotta be a leader, Jacob, see?
Now sit back down.
Thank you, everybody. Under the consent agenda, Mister Wal, there are two addendum items, if you please take note of those. Uh we received a link or resignation today and then a finalizing of an internal transfer as well.
Those are on.
They are on.
The employment seven point three.
Yeah, I'm seven three. And I can clarify the uh middle school STEM technology teacher, we had music technology in the middle school. And Mister Carr, Mister Brugler approached us versus making it specifically music technology. Turning it to a science, technology, engineering, art, mathematics. And we posted it that way versus a music technology to offer some additional STEM opportunity within the the middle school.
So it's a STEM and not a STEAM?
STEAM, it does include the STEAM.
Okay.
Science, technology, engineering, arts and mathematics.
Okay, um sure everyone's reviewed the consent agenda, are there any items that need to be further discussed or removed? If not, I would undertake a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion.
And a second.
Thank you, Kathy. Uh roll call?
Mrs. Irwin?
Yes.
Mister Rodenberger?
Yes.
Mister Wall?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mister Moes?
Yes.
Alright, um are there any old business items that need to be brought before the board this evening?
I I, Mister Morton, you have to attend to the uh. Foundation meeting.
Yes, uh.
I was going to say for ten, I was keeping scorebook at a basketball game.
At a rescheduled ballgame.
Yeah.
Um the foundation uh did meet last Wednesday and uh the foundation awarded. On a little over nineteen thousand dollars in mini grants uh to the Defiance City Schools teachers that applied. Um in addition to that, uh it was proposed by the board, uh the foundation board. To create um a capital improvement fund within the foundation. Uh that would be potentially uh have its own standalone fund within the foundation. That would allow people to donate directly to that fund. And that the foundation could choose to move any remaining leftover mini grant money uh to that fund. Um that will then go to the Defiance Area Foundation uh for their approval and and that will be on there. Uh there, uh Julie Hout and Sadie Patterson came and presented to the uh uh Schools Foundation. An idea of an outdoor um uh learning lab at Defiance Elementary. That's what spearheaded that conversation about creating the capital improvement fund. I will also bring them uh to you uh to show you their vision and what that would look like. Uh and then I uh I would imagine they will also be attending the Defiance Rotary Club, Lions Club, uh Optimus Club. Uh to share that vision out. Um Mrs. Hout and 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 Mrs. Patterson. Uh actually um asked that the, I told them to envision big. Uh and and not, you know, they wanted to put a couple of benches and a couple of garden uh planer boxes outside. And I said, if you had, you know, no budget in mind, what would you want it to look like? And they uh did a nice presentation and they uh wanted to call it the Jim Nussbaum uh outdoor learning lab. Very appropriate, Jim was an outdoorsman, um and obviously Sadie's stepfather. Uh but uh he was a science teacher and incorporate that into that, and they did an outstanding job. I think when you guys see it, you'll you'll actually be blown away. I told them I'd give them the second, the not two Wednesdays in a row, they didn't have to come and bring them back. Um and then um I I I think that uh the next step, once we get to that, that they would uh, we would entertain. Uh some some local businesses to help with us and and getting that started. In addition to that, uh with the foundation, um I'm trying to think if there were any other. I I I would be remiss if I didn't point out uh the the foundation and their fundraising campaign. Uh where their goal was to raise thirty thousand dollars for the year. And uh we were um in in the neighborhood of sixty-four hundred dollars short. And a foundation board member and her husband donated the sixty-four hundred dollars for the foundation. To reach the goal of thirty thousand dollars in fundraising for a year. And um kudos to uh Doctor uh John Scholl and Doctor Amy Brunswick. For for contributing that to the foundation. Um and of course, Amy's on the board member and she and John were also uh campaign chairs a couple of years ago for us, so. I think that kind of summarizes.
Past year.
Past year, this past year. Um and uh they will be looking for a couple of new, uh we have a couple of people terming uh that are terming out. Uh and we'll be looking for a couple of new members to serve on that board as well.
Did they also award scholarships?
They did, thank you, Mrs. Davis, they awarded our scholarships and I don't have them in front of you, but uh or in front of me, the uh.
Hinkle?
Hinkle Scholarship uh for teachers, there were two new applications. Uh those were awarded to uh Maddie Kohler, uh who's going to school uh to be a high school special educator. Uh Keaton Lennabreak, who's going to school to be a high school math teacher. Uh and then uh the two renewals were Madison Daniels and Chloe Wetstein. Who are both currently in college um uh in edu- education programs.
So they had the Matthew, are they still doing that?
Um I'm Kathy, I don't, yes, but I I don't I don't recall.
So, okay, they're still doing.
The the standard scholarships, um you have the uh Hinkle, you had the the C R C, um the Nixon.
Yeah.
Matthew Scholarship, um I probably can pull it up on my notes here, I did.
Was it Shirey?
The Shirey Scholarship, correct. And the the Shirey family and the Nixon family, um they they are um integral in picking who who the children are and the qualifications for that. Uh the Punches, they do not, they do it their, they do that through the band program at the band banquet.
Ah, gotcha.
Thanks for the update on the uh foundation, any other old business items? Not any new business. I haven't seen none, and there's no need for an executive session tonight as.
That's correct.
Far as I can tell, uh then I would entertain a motion to move the jury.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll say it.
Mister Wall?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mister Moes?
Yes.
Mrs. Irwin?
Yes.
Mister Rodenberger?
Yes.